You're the last one. You wanted to make sure we could hear you.
Anybody have a flag?
Are we all healthy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's the best news. Okay.
Okay. Shall we stand in and do the pledge of allegiance?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Which is changed.
One nation.
Your God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian.
No problem.
Thank you. And now if I could get a motion to approve three minutes from the April 2nd, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Our first order of business. Oh, John, would you read our first recommendation? Sorry about that.
Yes. Recommendation S. 2020-14 that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the purchase of Chromebooks for year one of four-year technology refresh program.
Thank you, John. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll approve. I'll move the motion for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, let's do it. Dr. Bryce, would you like to?
Yes. So first of all, good evening, everyone. And so you, in your packet, you should have two documents. You should have a memo from our Director of Information, Rose Mueller, to me that I forwarded, that we have forwarded to you, as well as information from the vendor, which is Dell. And so the issue is that we want to move the district to a place where ultimately, here's where we would buy, or lease actually is the correct term, leased Chromebooks. We would lease Chromebooks for students entering the fifth grade and the ninth grade. And what would happen is those individuals would then get take-home Chromebooks. They would keep them for three years. We would purchase that after the end of the, the third year. We would use for that fourth year, and then we would recycle those Chromebooks to, into classroom devices and seek to get an extra year out of them. But that really is the goal. The, this year, this particular year, we've taken an inventory with everything that's happened with social distancing, with schools being closed. We have actually loaned out over 700 Chromebooks in addition to the Chromebooks that have already gone home, the 2,000 Chromebooks that have already gone home with our secondary students. And so we recognize the need to make sure that we are taking a systematic approach to this, fifth grade, ninth grade, updating those Chromebooks or swapping them out after the end of four years, using those Chromebooks at the lower levels, if possible. And we think that this puts the, the district in a position where we're going to be really in good shape with our technology infrastructure moving forward. And so with that, I await your questions.
Mrs. McBride?
Yeah. How come if every child is supposed to have a Chromebook, we ended up sending out 700 more?
Yep.
And how come, how many students is it for the fifth grades and the ninth grades? How many computers is that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. One of the things that we did is fifth graders actually have Chromebooks, but their Chromebooks are not take-home. And so, and there are the rest of the elementary. So the 700 Chromebooks that we loaned out were Chromebooks for students who reported, students and families that reported they did not have a device at home and would not have been able to participate in distance learning. All of our secondary students have a Chromebook that is issued that is a take-home. And so what we did was, we used the devices in our buildings to get to provide to students and families that didn't have a device so that they can participate. So that's, that's the reason for that. At, at the grade level, we tend to look at elementary schools and think that for the fifth grade, that we have approximately 250 students. At the ninth grade level, you would think that we would probably also have maybe a little bit more. I can tell you, you know, the last number that comes to mind when I was speaking with Deb, Dr. DiBiase, we think about 222 current students are seniors, right? So it's somewhere between that 220 and 250 range.
So about 500?
Correct.
No, between the six, the children going in.
Into.
In the ninth, it's somewhere around 500.
Correct. But, but for this initial, for this initial purchase, one of the things that we're looking to do with the initial purchase, we know that we have other grade levels that are at the end of their useful life for their machines. And so we have to replace those. I believe that, that is the seventh grade, the rising seventh grade and the rising eighth grade. So that's why we have to replace those, those machines, and we also have to replace teacher Chromebooks as well.
Sorry, go ahead, Marge. When Marge is done, Mr. Bradshaw has a question.
I don't want to use up all my time, but we don't, why don't we have insurance plans for parents?
Oh, we actually do have an insurance plan for, for parents where the parents can take out the insurance, and if the screen breaks or things like that, that the, the charge would either be a minimal charge or it would be. We actually do have that. It is not a requirement. Some parents avail themselves of it. Some parents do not.
Why would I do that if it's not a requirement? Why would I?
Well, so let me just, for everyone, we find ourselves with, like when distance learning first began, we recognized that there were some devices that were, had been repaired, but the parents had not paid for the repair. And so we had to make a decision whether or not we were going to withhold the device because those students were actually getting loners when they came to school, and they would have to turn the loner in at the end of the day. We made a decision to provide those devices for them. I think that the school committee would, would tell me that that was what they would want. They would want all students to have a device. We hope that parents purchase the insurance, but we know that every parent doesn't do that. And then the event that the parent doesn't purchase the, the insurance, we also know how critical the Chromebooks have been to data, daily instruction, even when we're in our buildings. And so it, it really puts the, the district in a bind. You have to repair the device. You want students to have that opportunity. Again, you hope the parents either make the choice to and can afford to purchase insurance.
Mr. Bradshaw, do you want to?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So.
Sheila.
So Jonathan, if I'm looking at the 2020 Chromebook puzzle, it indicates that in FY21, that $480,000 is going to go to lease 1,600 Chromebooks across grades five, six, seven, nine, and 10. Is that correct?
Correct.
So is that 480,000 all due in FY21, or is that spread over the three-year life of the, of the lease?
Yes, it's actually spread over the three-year life of the lease.
Okay, so next year will be on the order of $160,000 that will be, that will be owed to Dell, 160 in year two and 160 in year three.
Correct, right? And, and we also know that we actually still have, we have the third, the third year lease payment for a number of Chromebooks right now that we, that would.
That would be part of, we'd have to pay that next year as well.
We'd have to pay that as well.
So then I look to FY22 and what appears to be the out years. And, and it would appear that moving forward and after FY21, we have initiated our four-year refresh cycle or a three-year refresh cycle, and will only be paying for grades five and, and nine, which I'm estimating is going to come to about 150,000 based on the 500 students at 300, $300 a device.
Correct.
Okay, so then, so then the next, next year's bill will be 50 plus 160. So we'll be at 210 for next year, probably 210 the year after that.
Correct.
But, but next year, we're going to be at 160 plus the, whatever we have to pay for the year three. Do we know what that money, how much that is? And what did we put in our FY21 budget for this line item, and did that include these numbers?
Yeah, so we've got Rose on the line. Rose, can, do you know what that number is for?
I, I think it's a little over 22,000.
Yeah.
22,000. So we're looking at 182,000 next year? And that was part of, that was part of the budget that was recently approved by the JSC?
Correct. And if we think about what our, our line item for technology is, let me just, because I don't have it off the top of my head, but I am certain that we have calculated, I thought it was 400,000 for technology?
And excuse me, if I could just talk for a minute. So my initial memo, Mr. Bradshaw, estimated 480,000 because I was estimating 300 per device. But there's also a document in your packet that I got a lease quote from Dell, which is not that much money. What we also have to consider is a case for each one of the Chromebooks, and I budget typically $30. So that's why I budget the 300, you know, for each device because I include a case.
Can we reuse the cases that we currently have?
Some of them we can, sure.
Most of them you can't, though, I don't think.
They're just the soft side, the soft-sided cases, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
They get, they get pretty beat up. I, I'm, some kids actually get their own cases and don't use those at all. So those are probably in perfect condition. Other kids use theirs until the zippers break, like my kids. And that's just wear and tear over a number of years.
Right, okay. Okay, I, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, Sheila, I'm sorry, I skipped. I think, I think I had Sheila up, and then we'll go to you, Adam. Thank you.
Oh, I can go, that's fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go Adam and then Sheila.
Okay, thanks. So my question is, relates to what you were just, what, what Rose was just saying. The recommendation is to approve the purchase. Are we approving? Well, moving forward with the plan, right, the move to, to, and, and my question is, are we approving up to $480,000? Or are we approving whatever the cost is for the lease of 1,600 Chromebooks plus all necessary cases? Because I just want to make sure that I understand what it is that we're approving.
Yeah, so I, in order to make sure that we're in compliance with our policy, you have to know what the total number is. Hi, grandbaby. Hi. You have to know what the total number is, and that's why we, we told you up to 480,000 every year, the, what we would have to pay would be some portion of that.
Right, so as Rose was mentioning, there was a document with with the actual number for the, for the device, which I believe was
Correct. Plus, plus we think 30, 30, approximately $30 for each case. It's, which is going to be around 270, 275 times 1,600.
So do you still want us to approve 480,000?
Yeah, up to.
Or do you want us to approve 1,600 times 275? Which would be 440,000.
Yeah, I think you need to, the recommendation would be to approve the requested amount. And we're only in this request purchasing Chromebooks. So it gives us, it gives us the flexibility. If they come back and they tell us, oh, well, you also need purchase, you know, with 1,600 Chromebooks and, you know, we need to purchase something else within that contract. We don't believe that there's going to be anything else. But it gives us some flexibility and, and remember, we, we only would purchase, we only would provide three lease payments. So it's going to be prorated over the, the three-year life of the request.
So to, to, what you just said, does that mean that the $480,000 that we're approving would not include the amount for the cases?
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm distracted by Marge's panel.
Yeah, so you know what? We actually have to pay for the case. My understanding is that we actually pay for the cases separately, right? But the, the total of 475 or 480 would get us all of the, it would get us $30 cases for 1,600, 1,600 Chromebooks. Tina? Tina, can you do me a favor? Can you pull the fiscal expenditures and tell me the total in the tech line for us? Because what I'm giving, for technology, I've got technology-related hardware at 269, but there's another line for technology. So I just want to make sure that we've got the, the right amount. I also see technology-related supplies for 40,000. So that's about 310. If you throw software in, would this is software, but 310 for hardware? For me? Adam, did that answer your question?
I think so. I just wanted, I just, I think that what you're saying is, and, and if I sum this up incorrectly, please correct me, but the 480,000, you don't think it's going to be 480,000 based on the quotes that you've gotten? But you want approval up to the 480,000, and there wouldn't be an additional request to pay for any cases?
Correct.
Okay, yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Sheila?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So did we only go up to bid for Dell? Any other vendors, like HP or?
So we know that number one, Dell is on the state-approved list. Each time we do this, we need to get other quotes. But part of the issue is, once you make a decision to go with a, a certain provider, then we buy all of the equipment and tools to, to fix them. So we don't want half the district on Dell Chromebooks, the other half on Google Chromebooks, or divided it by a quarter.
Right, and I do think that we need to look at what the pricing is for all these separate vendors.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because and the other thing is, is on Rose's, it's called the 2020 Chromebook puzzle.
Yep.
It looks like in 2021, she has 1525. And then 2022, 1248, 989, 47. And this goes back to me requesting, probably now it's been over a year, way before your time break, but trying to get a actual technology plan around. We have other things that are going to come up, right, that we're going to have to go and, and upgrade and refresh. And so what overall is our overall, you know, path forward for technology? How much is it going to cost us year one, all the way down through year five? Because we need to plan that in the event that we don't get funding. And we just see what our infrastructure is. I just don't see that here. And I haven't been seeing that, so I'm kind of concerned that, although I understand the need for, you know, obviously the need for Chromebooks and the need to get us upgraded and moving forward 12, I just don't kind of see a path, I see a plan here. And I, I can't figure out the 1,600 versus the 1525. And then last year, I looked at what the submitted IT budget was last year, and it said that the value of the Chromebook was $119. So I just have used a, since there's no technology plan to kind of go to and reference all the time, I just don't understand kind of where the 1,600 coming from, like why? And I understand like these puzzle grids that she, that Rose has provided. It just doesn't seem to be comprehensive, I guess. I'm not really following.
Yeah, so I'm going to let Rose step in. Can you answer two questions for the school committee? Number one is about the issue of, of equipment and why we get, or how we get multiple providers. And then the, the question about how the, how, how we came up with the number that we're getting this year versus next year versus the out years.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So the reason that we have, have recommended the Dell Chromebook is because by, on large, it has gotten the best reviews for school departments. We do get a number of devices over the course of the year and test them out. The durability of the HP Asus, and I can't remember the other model, Sheila, is far inferior to the, to the Dell simply because they're made for education and they're more of a quality product. So particularly since we're going to try to get four, maybe five years out of these devices, we really need to make sure that we pay attention to the durability of it as well as the function. But it's, you know, a Chromebook is pretty much a Chromebook. But as far as the form factor, we need to pay attention to that. So that's why I've recommended the Dell. And your second question was what, Dr. Bryce?
So did you, I understand what you're saying. I mean, I have an HP Chromebook that my son has. And I don't see it's any different, but I, I just, I'm concerned that we're kind of just going with one vendor. I don't see analysis done saying kind of what you said, like comparing all of the vendors like we normally do for another, like if we go up to bid for, you know, construction or something. So I, I do this with a lot of money, and it's a huge investment. And I just don't want to, I just don't feel that it's comprehensive to me, and I don't feel that there's really a plan that I can kind of completely fully understand. And I don't see that, you know, how this plays into everything else. And you need to have money, not just this year, but like let the follow-on years kind of, and we sustain what we're trying to do.
Okay, so I, I have done analysis on it. And, you know, that is not just me. It's, it was a few of us working on that. And as far as the number for 1,600 instead of 15, I think it was 25, is that we're anticipating loss because of what we're doing, you know, lending the Chromebooks out to families. We also have a grade eight and a grade 12 that are supposed to turn in their Chromebooks, and then we'll be repurposing them. We're kind of skeptical that we're going to get every single one of those grade, grade 12s back. So that 75 Chromebooks were more or less, I'll say, a, a kind of cushion that we can make sure that everybody's outfitted with a Chromebook. As far as an overall plan, Ms. Ellsworth, I, I do have an overall plan. This was the plan that Dr. Bryce asked to be presented at this time because we've learned that there is a 40-plus day lead time for shipping for Chromebooks. So there was more of an urgency to get this on, you know, in front of you so that we can have this discussion. We do have a number of computer labs that need to be replaced in the district. There's a music lab at the middle school, one at the high school. There is a couple of computers that they use for, this is off the top of my head. There, oh, there's a fine arts lab at the high school that needs to be replaced and a few computers in the digital video lab. There's also two labs that we think will be able to be funded with grant money. And I have a meeting this week, at the end of this week, with Dr. Senna to try to plan for those. So really, I mean, the urgency now is because of the shipping time. But I can assure you that there is an overall plan for, for the district for refresh.
So I think, first of all, thanks, Rose, for that. The other thing that I would mention is when we talk about loss, what we're really talking about is, we think with the use that our machines are getting right now, that when they are returned, they're going to be, we believe that we're going to have an increased level of machines that need to be taken out of service because they're no longer functioning. They have, it's sort of, we've accelerated the end-of-life for some of those Chromebooks in the, in the elementary that we've loaned out, as well as at the eighth grade level and the 12th grade level, what they look like when they come back. And so we just expect that we're going to need a, a larger number of Chromebooks to hold in reserve. So that's about 75 that we are, are counting for. So that's why our number went from 15 to 16.
Okay, I know Victor, do you still have a comment?
Yes, of course. My, my first que, first question of several is the fact, does every student right now have a Chromebook?
So every student in the district has a Chromebook or has a personal device that they're using to access. And so we have clearly made devices accessible. What we had to do was, some families that have multiple students that are in elementary school, we provided one device per family, just to make sure that they have devices. We are also, in some cases, providing hotspots and, and other ways of internet connectivity for those families. But at the secondary level, all students have Chromebooks. When they break, parents are sending them back or, or notifying us, and we're giving them new Chromebooks. I would mention that we are, that our inventory, we just took another inventory. Our inventory, we, I'm not going to suggest that we are out of replacements, but we certainly don't have the number that we, we, of, of available Chromebooks that we had when we began distance learning. So we just want all of our students and families to the best of their ability to take care of the machines, to treat them gingerly as they should, and to make sure that they're, they're using them for work and, and not for other things because that's the most important thing right now.
Before, before COVID, how, what students were assigned Chromebooks to take home?
Yeah, so the take-home Chromebooks were assigned to all students in secondary. So all our middle school and high school students.
So K, K1, 2, 3, they didn't have them, is that correct?
No, they did not have take-home Chromebooks. But grades three to five actually had Chromebook carts in the classroom. So they had a, a device in their individual classroom.
My question is, since COVID, how many computers have we given, how many Chromebooks have we given to students who did not have them before COVID?
Well, I'm looking at the latest.
Excuse me, where did they come from?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the latest update. And thus far, we have distributed 742 devices. The overwhelming majority of them are Chromebooks. And when we think about, hold on, let me, let me hide this column so I can see it easier. The overwhelming majority of the books are being loaned at the elementary level. So, hold on, I'm gonna. All right, so 153 to Cole Andrews, 145 at Gatoris, 251 at, at Hugh Cole, 101 at Rockwell. a hundred and one at Rockwell, twenty-six at KMS, twenty-nine at Mount Hope. And then we actually had to give TAs, because they're supporting students, TAs and other staff, thirty-seven.
Well, not known, the math total there, did you have a total right there?
Yeah, the total is thus far, seven hundred and forty-two devices.
All right, now my next question is, when we get back to school, what are we gonna do with these seven hundred and fifty Chromebooks?
Well, we certainly expect to collect them and Rose and her team are going to check them to make sure that they continue to be operable and then put them back into the buildings because all of those are the classroom Chromebooks that we, we use at, at K to five.
Excuse me, on the carts?
Yep, put them back on the carts.
But, but.
We're gonna have to sanitize them, we're gonna have to check to make sure that they're, they're operating the way they're supposed to and then put them back on, on the Chromebook carts.
So at Colt Andrews, for example, how many second graders are there, second grade classrooms? Three?
Three.
So that means you'll have fifty Chromebooks that are, that are not needed because you only need one cot, is that correct?
No, we don't, no, every classroom has a cot.
Every classroom has a cot?
Correct.
So these, so basically, each classroom had a cot and you just took those kid, those computers and sent them home to the kids instead of keeping them in the cot?
Correct.
Right, fine. The other thing is, the, the computers that we're going to purchase, please, I'm all in favor of the soft-sided cases. Because if you've ever seen any of these kids with these computers, lunchboxes or whatever, they'll go out to the playground and they just throw them on the ground. And that's where our damage comes from. I mean, it, it's a terrible situation, but that, that's what happens. Getting back to the, the price, I mean, I almost could agree with Ms. Ellsworth about the fact that, you know, I, I personally would like to see what the bids were. This is a big purchase here and we should be able to see all the bids. Now, I don't know if that's just in your jurisdiction or we have the right to, to say that. But I really think, again, you've heard me say this before, before I make a, a, a vote, something like this, I wanna know the background of what, what brought, brought the vote, vote. Now, I trust in the fact that you probably looked at it and decided this was the best deal or whatever it might be, but I still wanna make my decision as to what, which is better.
Okay.
Well, if I understand it correctly, we went to, we went to a state, a vendor who's already, who already has the approval of the state. And when you go to a state vendor, you don't have to go, you don't have to outsource. And if this was the vendor we were using before and we're happy with them and it's a state vendor, then why would we want to change and end up with, as Rose said, with several different companies maintaining our computers?
Because Marge, I was on a gateway and I couldn't get in. I'm on, I'm now on an Apple. Over here, I have an HP. All of them do the same thing and I can do whatever I want with any one of them. Done.
Yeah, so that was actually my comment. And so again, I think part of the issue is that for the out years, there are some things that we do ourselves. When you have different product lines, it means that you often, you know, often the, the vendors do different things of a proprietary nature, which means we might have to buy equipment, we certainly would have to buy different parts to fit the different machines. And in, in doing so, it would incur, it would increase our cost. I, I think if the ask is, do you wanna see what the cost of other devices are? All right, we can provide that to you because I'm sure they're on the state list as well. That the, the real issue becomes, how do we ensure that we are not creating conditions where half the, half the district or a third of the district is on one, one platform, another third is on a different one, and then still a third because that year they had the cheapest price, but they, they all operate differently. And so that's something that, that we need from a technology perspective. We wanna make sure that, that we take care of.
I, I have no problem with, with your rationale. I just want the fact, I wanna see the rationale so I can make a decision for myself. That's all it is, comes down to.
Are there any other questions or comments? I think, I was just think, oh, Carly? Go ahead.
I can ask one quick question. I know there's a lot of kiddos in middle school and high school who have a lot of their own devices. Have we explored doing any sort of tech opt-out? I don't know how much money that would save or could save.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that question?
Oh, I was just wondering, I know there's a lot of kiddos in middle school and high school who have their own devices. Have we explored any sort of tech opt-out? And I don't know how much money that would or wouldn't save, but just maybe something to explore.
So we actually have not explored a tech, tech opt-out or in some cases, it's sort of like bring your own device. The, I would, I would think that the issue would be one of equity because you could not ensure that all students have the, the basic platform with which to do what we're doing right now and to do the other work that's gonna happen when we return to school. Certainly, teachers are incorporating technology in new and different ways that, that the implementation of those new methodologies will continue when students return. And we wanna ensure that, that all of our students have the opportunity to fully participate. I think what we're seeing in Rhode Island is, is where the playing field appears to be fairly equal, say for maybe one or two districts that, that I know people are working really hard. But certainly nationally, it, it, it just shows the inequity in, in either funding or the decisions leaders have made around the use of technology. And so we're in a good place. We wanna, we don't wanna, we don't wanna regress. We want to move forward and moving forward means that, that we should think very strongly about ensuring that all students have the access to the same basic level of technology. If you wanna then buy, you know, have a MacBook and, and have this and that, that's what students and parents, those are family decisions. So we wanna ensure that all of our students have this basic level of technology.
May I, may I add to that too, Jonathan, please, from a, from a system standpoint? So we manage our devices in the background through the Google Console. And if kids were bringing their own device, we could not do that. So we could not, well, it is an equity issue, so to kind of piggyback on that. So we could not deploy the same apps and ensure the same safeguards on a bring your own device as we can on the devices that we manage.
Thank you for.
Sorry, I believe, Carly, were you finishing up? I'm sorry, it was hard for me to hear.
No, I'm all done, thank you.
You're okay, thank you. John Saviano?
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering if I missed, are there, the question is, are there any more quotes? Are there, is that, did they go out and actually get bids from three or four different companies? Or did it go to the state, the state bidding process or, you know, what is it?
Yeah, so I believe that we just went through the state and we didn't have to bid it, it's already on the state-approved list.
Yes.
Gave us a quote. If people want us to get other quotes, we can get other quotes. I would also tell members of the school committee that given what people are now seeing with distance learning, the, I don't believe machines are getting cheaper at this moment. In fact, I think they, they may be flying off the shelves in ways that previously we haven't seen. But it is the school committee's decision, they would like to see two other quotes, we'll get two other quotes.
Okay, I saw Adam's hand go up and then Brian, John, did you have, did you wanna finish up?
Yes, yes, I just want, I just wanted to say, my experience with, with the quote from the state generally is the best quote. I'm not saying that, don't just believe me or listen to me, but I, that's my experience from the past. The, the state works this pretty hard and because they, because the bidders know that they have a stamp of approval from the state, they come in with their lowest, lowest bid. I'm just, I'm just mentioning that.
I just wanna check in quickly with John Bento, because, oh, he's gone. John, if you, if you wanna say anything, you, you may have to just speak out because I can't see you and most people.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my video keeps going out. Just one quick comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not big on the whole sole source if, if we can prevent it. I, I think having multiple offices is a good thing because if nothing else, I do like the idea of just sticking with one company, it does make perfect sense. But maybe it also helps us leverage as far as pushing price down, if that makes sense. And if nothing else, we can go back to the vendor to see, hey, what are the additional things that we would have to do to get multiple, different vendor communication tools to talk to one another? I, I do like this, the sense of just staying with one, but it, it never hurts, you know, as far as trying to drive price down to look at others, especially when quotes usually don't cost us any money. That's all I gotta say. I'd like to move on soon with this, I think we're killing this issue.
Okay, you guys heard him, so I've got Victor and Brian and then maybe we, and Adam.
Do I go first?
Sure.
The recommendation to, to Bryce, the recommendation is, the school committee recommends to approve the purchase of Chromebooks. It does not say who the vendor is going to be. Does that leave it open that we can look at other ones and still recommend, vote for this recommendation? Anybody out there?
That's gonna be a question. Depending on how you, depending on how you word the motion. Though you could make a motion to allow the superintendent to buy Chromebooks up to the cost of four hundred and eighty thousand or whatever the number is, with the understanding that he would look for other vendors. You could make the motion without naming the vendor.
Thank you, Marian.
Okay, Adam and Brian?
Sir, thanks, just, I wanna get one piece of clarification, I suppose, which is, if we were to go, if I understand what I've heard, sort of, I think collectively from Dr. Bryce and from Rose, is that if we go to a different vendor, it wouldn't really be an apples-to-apples comparison because we would need for it to be effectively implemented in our schools to replace all of the existing Chromebooks we have with the, with the machines from a different vendor. So instead of buying sixteen or leasing sixteen hundred machines, we need to lease four thousand machines and just start, and start now because, because otherwise we'd be, we would need to run parallel systems. Is that a fair way to think about this? So that if we were looking at, say, for the sake of argument, HP as an alternate vendor, we would need to buy a whole bunch more stuff in order to, in order to implement their system?
I actually think you're just about where, where we are in agreement. The one caveat that I would offer is that if this year we buy Dell, like in the past, we've purchased Dell. If, if this year we purchase HP and next year we don't purchase HP and we shift to another vendor, then that's where you, you find yourself. If you're gonna shift, switch vendors, then that needs to be a, an operational decision that we're moving to a different vendor and for the next X number of years, we're gonna purchase from that vendor so that we, we don't end up, to the best of our ability, operating multiple, multiple sort of product lines. Is the best thing I can say. It's almost like cars, right? So it's, you know, it's a Chevy and then you move to a Ford and then you move to a Chrysler, right? That's, they, they all are cars, but they all are different. They're designed a little differently for proprietary reasons and, and, and that will cost us time and it costs us money. It costs us training materials, more supplies. I don't think we wanna, it would not be my recommendation that we get into that. Having said that, I understand the importance of making sure we are comparing prices so that we are getting the, the, the most effective price for the, the product that we are gonna buy.
So then the other question I have is, are there other, Rose, do you know which other vendors, if any, that provide Chromebooks are on the state-approved list?
I have to check the state-approved list, Mr. Ramos.
All right, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bretta.
So Adam actually asked the question that I was going to ask, which is what are other vendors that are on the state-approved list? Though I, I would say that I don't necessarily agree with the Chevy, Ford, Toyota analogy simply because I think that these machines are running Google Chrome. And the, the work that Rose and her team are gonna have to do to maintain those systems and to put patches in are all gonna be Google patches for that operating system. The, the apps that they're gonna push are gonna be apps that are gonna have to work with Google. So, you know, in, in, in our office, we had Dells for a number of years and then they switched over to HPs and it's, okay, so maybe the power button's on the other side, but an HP running Windows is a, is, the interface is going to be transparent to the end user, whether it's an HP or a Dell.
Right, which actually proves the point. The point I was trying to make is, it's not the software that would be the problem, it would be the hardware. Sometimes, sometimes the, the, the physical box of the Chromebook is different. The, the parts might be sized differently, which means that we would then, the screens would be the big thing. So if screens are different, we'd have to purchase different screens for the new ones versus the old ones.
So on the maintenance side, on the maintenance side, it would, it, it would be, we'd send sixteen hundred Chromebooks back to HP to get refurbished and we'd send the other three thousand to Dell until, until the life cycle of those units goes up. But, you know, if HP comes in and, and they're half the cost and they only last two-thirds the time, so they need to be refreshed every two years, but they're half the cost, then that's a better deal for us.
Well.
So, so it's definitely something to think about.
Yeah, it is something to look at and we'll look at that. The other thing I would mention in, in your comments, just the, the idea of the, like switching the, at some point, organizations make a decision to switch from, like you said, from Dell to HP. That's not a problem if the organization is gonna make that switch and gonna continue. But on a year-to-year basis, to switch from, to switch between vendors would not be, would not be cost-effective. And the other thing is, much of the labor for these, these devices, we actually do in-house, right? So in their first year, their second year, we send them out, but a lot of the other stuff we do. And so that means that we're gonna have to get parts and, and train our folks to do it.
But we're not locking in, correct me if I'm wrong though, Dr. Bryce, we're not locking into a long-term contract with Dell other than for these sixteen hundred devices. So Dell's not guaranteeing us three hundred dollar pricing next year for our next three-year buy and they're not guaranteeing us three hundred dollar pricing in year three for our next three, right? It's, we're, we're only getting one snapshot. So, I, I mean, so it's very difficult to say if HP would be a better, a better product to go with. It, it's difficult to say that, if I'm not getting a three-year outlook and say, okay, HP, I need sixteen hundred units this year. And hold on, I'll go back to, I'll go back to our, our form. I need sixteen hundred units this year. I need, I need twelve hundred or thirteen hundred units in year two. I need a thousand units in year three. I need five hundred units in year four. I need five hundred units in year four. Why are we not asking those questions? And then that puts us on a long term path that would that might make a a reasonable justification to do a a wholesale shift over in our provider. We're asking them for a one year quote on 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 three years of maintenance rather than like Mrs. Ellsworth's plan says in the past, we have our plan. Let's go bid our plan. What's our plan? We need X number of devices for the next five years. Who's going to give us the best deal on those devices?
All right, I'm going to cut in. I, Marge, did you have something? Okay.
Well, I just, um.
Wrap this up. I'm going to go to Marge and Victor and then we're going to end this conversation and, um.
I just, well, I just about disagree with everybody but Adam, which kind of probably blows his mind, but we're 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 leasing for three years. That's a three year plan. We've looked at it for five years over what we might need over those years. We have a plan. We've used Dell. Dell's been very successful. We've been very happy with them. I see no legitimate reason to switch at this particular time, particularly since our experience has been good. And so, um, as Adam said, unless you want to buy four thousand HPs and start all over again with a different place, um, then we go with what we have. So I I absolutely don't support the I we we outsource. We went looking for prices when we first did this. We chose Dell and I'm going to stick with Dell and I'm going to vote no if you guys are going to do all this running around. I'm not going to do it.
Okay, Victor.
Well, just to let Marge know, I'm going to vote no, and I'm letting you know that right now because this is the same situation as I've heard before. When we hire people, when we we have the applicant and we have one person and we don't know the other people that were involved. It's the same thing here. We're we're hiring a a computer and we don't know the other ones and we don't know what the situations on the other ones are at all. So for that reason, I just want to let you know that I am voting no.
Okay.
But I do know Vic, that we hire somebody who is our tech person. She knows what she's doing. We hire our superintendent. He knows what he's doing and they're recommending this to us. So in the interim, I'm looking at the professionals that we hire and what their recommendation is. So I'm going to vote no if you change the motion.
And I campaigned that I would not be a rubber stamp like everybody else could be.
It's not a rubber stamp.
Um, I I'm gonna gonna wrap this up and we'll move to vote in a second. Just wanted to, um, share that I I will be supporting this recommendation. Um, I feel that we can have a workshop on tech, um, moving forward. We can do that. We can do a deep dive, but right now, it seems to me from all that I've heard tonight and the questions I asked before the meeting, that a lot goes into changing a vendor and reimaging machines and doing all of these things. Um, I don't think now is the time to do those things because we really need that tech right now. Um, I don't know exactly what what next year is is going to look like at this point. None of us do. Um, I think it's definitely something worthy of looking into and, um, right now I will be voting in favor of this recommendation. So with that, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes?
No.
Can we get a show of hands for Kate on the nays?
Nays, nays.
Nays. We've got Brian, Sheila and Victor, correct? Anyone can't see? Okay, thank you. And John.
I would I would like to say that that my vote is in no way a reflection of the work that Rose and her team does. I just think that we need to, at at some point, step back and take a comprehensive look and and work the plan and buy to the plan. Uh, so I I I don't want it to reflect, uh, in any way the work that that, uh, that Rose does and her team does to to maintain our systems.
Sorry, uh, John Saviano, next recommendation, please.
Wait, wait, um, Aaron, what motion did you just vote on? Because what I heard was that somebody made a motion for discussion, but I never heard a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent. Was that motion made and did I miss it?
Yes, yes, I made it.
I made a, I asked for a motion to approve the recommendation after John read it.
Right. I made and and I made the recommendation and then I said for discussion.
All right, I heard discussion, but okay, as long as you're sure you made the motion, second it.
Thank you. Okay, next recommendation, please, John.
Yes, recommendation S twenty twenty dash fifteen, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one school calendar.
Um, I'm just going to say a few words about this because it's been a little while. Um, back in February, uh, we had a workshop where the superintendent presented three versions of a calendar. Pardon me. Um, and he put it out to the public and we all looked at it, um, discussed it. And tonight he will be recommending, um, one calendar uh, with the caveat that, as I said earlier, we don't know what is going to come for the beginning of next school year. Um, so, uh, you know, it's going to be a little up in the air, but we wanted to have something for people to look at. Um, so with that, Dr. Bryce.
So wait, uh, point of order, we we haven't made, nobody's made the motion. We haven't seconded it. Which version is this motion being made against?
I think that's what Dr. Bryce is going to tell us, Brian, which one he wants.
Yeah, it states, Brian, it states upon the recommendation of the superintendent.
Okay, we just haven't made a, we just haven't made a an a a motion or a second, so we can't have any discussion until I guess that.
Would you like to make a motion, Brian? That'd be great.
If he tells me which one he wants to to, if he if he tells me which one we're we're making a motion on.
I'll make a motion, but it's not what Dr. Bryce wants, so.
Okay, should we? Would you like to table this one, Dr. Bryce, and we can come back to it?
So I I think we should have a discussion and then come back to it at a later time. And here's why. Um, so we we know how, uh, this year i- is is clearly not the year that we expected. We don't know if, uh, the governor or the commissioner of education will make a recommendation to do something like a statewide calendar. Um, but this, I I think having the the discussion and then holding holding off on the vote gives people at least time, the members of the school committee to 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 think about the options that we have.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion for discussion?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to, uh, actually to approve the recommendation of the superintendent, uh, to approve the twenty 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 one school calendar uh, for discussion and hopefully somebody will second that so we can have some discussion.
Thank you, Adam.
I will second it, but only for discussion because I don't agree with, um, the half day, uh, the half days.
Um, but I would, but but I wanted I wanted to just say, and this is, uh, with all due respect to Dr. Bryce, I I believe that we should approve a calendar despite the uncertainty for next year. Uh, I don't, I think that there is some, uh, benefit and value to providing, uh, people in the school community with at least, uh, the broad overall picture of what we have approved. If there are changes that need to be made because of orders that are made by the governor or otherwise, we can vote to amend and change the calendar subsequently as we did, uh, during our last meeting when she made the, uh, recommendations regarding the changes to the calendar for the month of April. I would rather that we move forward on this and not continue to leave it hanging for teachers and families, uh, uh, to wonder what it is, at least for the direction that we've headed. And as far as having time to think about it, I mean, we've had these three, uh, potential proposals in front of us since, I think, late January. So I don't feel as though we necessarily need any more time. I'd rather move forward tonight.
I agree with Adam. Thank you. Um, Mr. Cabral.
Yes, um, I have in front of me the calendar that, um, Bryce sent to us. And it is, uh, option two, which I definitely disagree with. And the reason I disagree with it is because there are three PD days and five early release days. This puts a lot of parents into a situation where they've got to plan for their children eight days. In option one, we have four full PD days. That gives the the parents the option to have to only worry about their children four days as to who's going to cover them. The nice thing I like about that is the fact that two of the days are on election day, uh, two election days, which is which is going to, they're going to be off anyway because we can't have the kids in school and have an election in the same school. But we can have the teachers there. So the teachers can have PD days on those two days. And then on March tenth, they have another day. That's a very important day in in life.
Birthday.
Stop it, Marge. Okay, anyway, continuing along.
Happy birthday. You'll be seventy-four.
Three Marge, thank you, right. Okay, um, anyway, that's why I would prefer the the number one, uh, item. It also is the fact that, uh, some of you may know that I was a teacher at one time and i- i- if you'd have a release time day, the day is is shot overall. Uh, you're not going to be able to get the work done that you normally try to get done in in a school. Kids are all upset. They're they're all excited. They're going to be leaving early or whatever it might be and you lose that time. So in my opinion, uh, option number one is the better one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Anyone else have a comment?
Vic. How about that, Vic? I agree with you.
This is this is a memorable day.
Mrs. Ellsworth?
Um, didn't we do a survey? Like we sent out a survey asking teachers and parents to, I remember filling one out.
Yeah, I was, I I.
It was like around.
Guys just go here.
What was the result?
So the results overwhelmingly, um, were that teachers and and members of the community, parents who filled out the survey, um, wanted option one. They wanted the four four full days. Because it it is easier. Uh, and so.
Okay.
Say that, um, we are clearly at a place and time where we are concerned and and we were on the phone earlier today, uh, on our daily check in with our union partners, both C ninety-four and BWEA. Um, we briefly discussed that this was going to be a a topic tonight. Um, it is clear that there are no easy answers as it relates to a calendar. So the four full days spread out across the year uh, are the same as they would be this year, um, or this current school year, except we do have one later in the year. Um, so there is some benefit to that. Um, what we've also seen during distance learning with the opportunity for professional development is that our staff desire the opportunity to work with each other to learn new and valuable skills, some of them foundational skills as they are beginning to work with technology. Uh, some are discussing curricular curriculum, um, uh, curricular items. So that I can absolutely say to the school committee, four full days is not enough. We may, you you may, as you discuss and ultimately, when you decide to to vote on this, may decide that for the next school year, maybe we we start with four days, but we spread them out over the year like, uh, calendar one. And that ultimately, uh, you then ask me to, uh, work with our union partners to see if we can do something else. It is imperative that we have more opportunities for professional development over, spread out throughout the year. I do recognize, however, the difficulty that that brings for some parents and families who would have to make different childcare arrangements and and that's something that we all have to consider. Um, but ultimately, in terms of what's best for teaching and learning, what's best for teaching and learning is that our staff, all of our staff, have real job embedded professional development that is ongoing that doesn't happen once a year and then it never happens again. So we just have to decide whether or not we're ready as an organization to put the the importance of teaching and learning, uh, front and center, um, in our discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Bradshaw.
So just so that I'm clear, uh, option two is Dr. Bryce's recommendation. And I think it sounds like it's it it really focuses a lot on the amount of PD professional development that our that our staff gets. So if I if I went through and and I'm sorry, I don't have my notes in front of me from from when we worked through this at the workshop. Option one, two and three are all going to have different PD hours of PD. Can you can you just give a highlight? Option one's going to have twenty hours of PD. Option two's going to have twenty-six or whatever that is.
Absolutely. So option one, and I'm just pulling it up for myself so I can look at it. Option one is the four full days, I believe. No, hold on. I got the wrong one.
Four.
Yeah, it says four.
Yep. So.
Got it, Brian.
Yep. Okay, so we have four PD days, uh, September, excuse me, August twenty-seventh, September the eighth, November the third. So September the eighth is primary election, November the third, general election, March the tenth. Four full days spread out over the year. It 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 is not quite the same as having monthly PD, but it it is a little bit better than what we currently have. So then you go to the.
But if I'm looking at hours, how many, I don't recall what.
Twenty hours, sorry, twenty hours.
So five hours is a normal PD day.
Correct.
Where six and a half is a normal school day.
Correct, but that is something that was negotiated and that would be something that would have to be dealt with in a different, um, in a different setting. If you go to the option two, option two is three full PD days and five early release days. The three full PD days would be August the twenty-seventh, September the eighth and November the third. The five early release days would be, uh, January the thirteenth, February the tenth, March the tenth, April the fourteenth and May the twelfth. All of those dates are the second Wednesday of the month in January, February, March, April and May. The total number of hours of PD would be twenty, the total number of hours of PD would be, uh, fifteen hours for the three, uh, PD days, full days and two hours per day for the early release days. We would then, um, we would then need five hours, uh, from staff and that five hours would mean that staff would have to spend one extra hour, uh, at school that day. So instead of it being a two hour early release, it would actually be three hours that they would they would be there. Um, and that's option two. And now let me go to option three. So the total number for that for option two would be fifteen, um, it would be thirty hours.
It would be.
For option three, which would be two PD days and eight early release days. The two PD days would be, um, the twenty-seventh, August twenty-seventh and September the eighth. The early release days would be October the seventh, December the ninth, January the thirteenth, February the tenth, March the tenth, April the fourteenth and April the, excuse me, May the twelfth and June the ninth. And so that would be in, well, it's not. It it is the second Wednesday of the month for every month except for October, uh, where it would be the first. And the total hours, ten PD days plus, um, plus sixteen hours, um, for PD. So you'd have twenty-six hours, um, right there. So if I, if if. So if I, if, if, if I had to make a recommendation to you, and I haven't officially made my recommendation to you, um, but the one that would be best for only, and, and this is very narrow, the one that is best solely for building professional development opportunities for teachers would be option two.
So, uh, one question.
Yes.
So do the number of PD hours change per option? Because in option, in option two, you said that the early release days were three hours of PD. So, and then you're going back to, on option, um, three, where there's eight early release days, it's only two?
Yeah, so the issue is that we put into the calendar four PD days for which we are paying staff. So if you, if you have an early release, the early release is a day where we've already paid staff. So we have to have another way of getting those additional hours. And you get those additional hours by adding an hour on. So we have to add an hour on, uh, to that option three, which would be really confusing. So I think option three really is not really, um, a viable option. The option really is option two or option one.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Mr. Cabral?
Yeah, I'm confused. Um, option one, it's twenty hours of PD time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Option two is thirty hours of PD time. Is that correct?
It is technically not thirty hours of PD time, and here's why. Um, because the three full PD days are five hours, so that's fifteen.
Yep.
That's fifteen hours.
Yep.
The early release days have already paid for them. They are counted in the one hundred and eighty. They're not counted in the four PD days. So what that means is we need an extra hour each of those five days in order for the, the, that fourth PD day to have been accounted for.
So, so basically, it's, uh, it's two hours a piece for each, each of the release time days. Is that correct?
It's two hours, plus you need that third hour.
Right, but the, the kids are released two hours early. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so that's two hours that the teacher's going to stay there.
Correct.
Another hour, correct?
Correct.
So if the kids leave, you're going to have PD to stop. Is that right?
Correct.
So that means three hours of PD on five days.
Correct.
Plus the other three days, that's thirty hours of PD.
Yes.
Okay. So that means you, you've got twenty hours for, um, the full days. You've got twenty, well, you've got thirty hours for the number two, and you've got twenty-six for the number three, correct?
Correct.
And again, again, I emphasize the fact of the amount of time that the teacher, the people and the teachers are going to have to worry about those kids, uh, on all those days that are released for that much time. But that's my issue. And again, you know that I'm, I'm all for one and not for any, any of the others. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bradshaw?
So when, when Dr. Bryce was given the explanation, he, he mentioned, I have not officially made my recommendation. So I, I was wondering, since this is a, on, on the recommendation of the superintendent, we approved the calendar, are we going to hear his official recommendation this evening?
It's my recommendation. I absolutely believe that option two is the best option for professional development over the course of the year. I just think that, given everything that we're dealing with right now, option two isn't tenable. And I would make the recommendation to the school committee to approve option one for next year with the caveat that you direct me to engage with, um, our, our, our union partners in looking at a comprehensive, uh, PD, um, plan for next year. So just like we talk about a technology plan, we also have to talk about professional development. Um, what we've seen over the last month because of distance learning is the, the, the absolute need for professional development. One of the things that came up in a earlier conversation, uh, that I, I would put on the table is as we go through what is amounting to some sort of economic, um, either recession or, you know, God forbid, a depression, um, with the number of people that are unemployed when people start to go back to work. Uh, one of the considerations is you don't want to have, you don't want people to have to worry about taking off a number of after, you know, afternoons because they don't have childcare. It is something that we, we should at least be mindful of, given the, the economic reality we're dealing with. Um, it gives us some of what we want, which is a professional development day later in the year. It doesn't give us everything we want, um, but, but it might be a step in the right direction. So my recommendation would be option one. Um, it's not perfect, um, but it does move us further to where we, we need to be.
Um, uh, and, and I'll say I'm all for that, and I even, I even like your caveat, um, to work with our, our, our union partners to, uh, develop a, a professional development plan, uh, for next year, uh, and move forward with that. So thank you, thank you for your recommendation.
I'll make a motion?
I, I think it was already made. Adam made it, didn't he?
Option one?
No, you have not made a motion to vote. You've only made a motion to discuss, so you have to make a motion now.
I make a motion that we vote on option one.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Adam?
Right. I'm opposed.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so Adam is opposed. Thank you.
Was it just the one? Was it just the one, uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, it appears to have just been Adam. Yep. Okay. Moving on.
To what? I think we're moving on to
Superintendent.
Superintendent's remarks.
So, uh, thank you. I wanted to, um, provide you, if you turn to the document, um, we have provided you with a monthly update through, um, the end of March. Um, it shows, um, our spending in all of the categories, salary benefits, contracted services, supplies and materials, property, equipment miscellaneous, and debt service. Because of where we, because we don't have people physically in buildings, um, we, we, it's clear that we are going to have, um, some cost, um, savings. We ju- we don't know what the total impact of that will be at the moment. Um, but, but one of those things might be a decrease in supply, so, um, a decrease in some of the other equipment that we have spent. Contracted services and supplies seem to be, um, areas where there have been a sizable decrease. If you look at March, um, versus February for contracted services, um, a decrease of, um, from seven hundred and sixty thousand, excuse me, uh, to about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And supplies and materials, I think, a decrease from, um, we went from a hundred and five thousand to sixty-six thousand. Um, and so, depending on how long, um, we continue this, uh, it is my expectation that we will start to see, uh, some of these same, um, savings occur um, over the, the next several months, depending on, um, what happens. Um, and that is something that can be applied, a- as you know, by policy. Um, if you have additional, um, remaining funds at the end of the fiscal year, um, the school committee votes on that, and if they so choose, uh, those dollars are then, uh, placed in, uh, fund balance. Um, we also may be able to, um, to fund some of the, um, there are a couple of line item, um, adjustments that might need to be made. We may actually have the ability to, to fund them, um, right out of this budget, and so not have to, to make them, pull them from, from other areas. And so, um, I'll turn it over to, uh, I don't actually have the ability to turn it over, but I know that, um, Mr. Bradshaw, our treasurer, had, uh, some questions that he had for us, and for me in particular.
Well, I'm just, you know, uh, I'm hoping that i- in May, we will have, um, a, a budget and facility subcommittee, re- regarding our current, our current budget. Um, it is good to see that some of these areas. We don't really have it on the agenda to talk about some of our facility things, but at some point, I would like to have a discussion on where we are with our projects, where we are with getting our, our, our ed development, uh, person on board so that we can revise our necessity of construction and move forward with that. If we have the opportunity at this point to talk about some of those things, that would be great, but I, I don't want to break, break protocol. You know, I, I think we, we could maybe have it for discussion purposes only if, if what I was reading in the state law is accurate, but we, we couldn't vote on anything that's not on the agenda. Um, but that would be, um, up to Madam Chair's discretion if we wanted to get into kind of where we are with some of our expenditures, with our, um, with our projects, where we are with phase three of our water mitigation, what we've spent, what we budgeted, um, and those types of things. Not that we may even have that, that information available this evening, but at some point, we would, I would like to have that discussion.
Actually, we don't have that available because we thought we were just going to keep it to the high level. So if the, if, if it is your desire, um, maybe we need to work with the chair to schedule a budget and facility subcommittee meeting.
That would, that would be fun.
Um, yeah, let me just chime in here for a second. I, I was on, recently on a, um, v- virtual meeting with other school committee chairs in the state, and so a, a lot of these questions were coming up, and it is, it is totally fine to have a subcommittee meeting. I mean, some districts are going on businesses, going along business as usual. Others are really sticking to, you know, when they need to meet so that, so that everybody can really be focused on what needs to be done in, in the moment with this new normal. Um, so I think at this, at this point, Brian, if you want to have a budget subcommittee meeting, um, you know, feel free to, to, to schedule one.
Perfect.
I would say.
I will, I will work with my, uh, with my subcommittee and, uh, find a date that works for them and make sure that we have our forty-eight hours to, uh, to post.
Great, and I'm going to go from Sheila to Victor to Marge.
So I just, uh, was noticing, I was wondering if we could get a report, um, that the summary by, uh, the one that you did together for, um, the budget package that has breakdowns, not available.
I can't understand.
Yeah.
I can't understand you.
Not coming in good.
Sheila?
And the other thing that I did, but
Sheila, we're having trouble with your, hearing you. There's something going on with you.
I have like four questions.
Can't hear you.
It says your bandwidth is low.
Can you hear me?
It's, um, it's not really audible, and you're going in and out and kind of freezing on the screen.
That made it, that might have been, I'll send something to Dr. Bryce.
Yeah. Yep, because now, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheila. He'll be expecting that. Um, I can't remember who I said was next, so. Okay, Victor, go ahead.
Um, at the last meeting, if you recall, someone made a motion, I believe, that we were going to pay our personnel until April 30th. Um, do we have to take any action? Um, we have a meeting. Uh, what do we do to, to continue that?
Mary Ann, could you address that?
Yes, um, you've agreed to pay your staff till April 30th. Any action to not, any further action needs to be a motion of the school committee. So, um, you're going to have to have another meeting, and the thing is, we don't know what the governor is doing yet. She hasn't officially announced her plan. So you almost have to wait to see what the governor is going to do.
Mary Ann, do we, do we have to make a motion, or we can just continue because they're being paid anyway?
Well, they're being paid anyway, so the superintendent would continue to pay until you tell him not to pay.
Right. All right, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay.
So can I just, I'm sorry, can I just clarify something? Um, that while we are paying staff, um, staff are engaged in work. Um, we have custodians and maintenance folks that are doing repairs, painting buildings, painting hallways and things like that. Our TAs and, 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 um, clerical staff or admin staff are, are working with, uh, with, with administrators and parents. Um, and so I just want to make it clear to our, our BWRSD community that our staff is working. Um, they are completing weekly logs that show, um, the activities that they are engaged in. Um, because we, we recognize, um, both the importance of keeping our staff working, but also being able to make sure that we're able to articulate exactly what they're doing, uh, with their time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Saviano?
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, Superintendent, um, my question is, does that mean that this summer, um, a lot of the things would have been done during this period, yeah, when it would normally be school? And so does that mean that we will not be paying them to do the work in the summertime because we're paying them to do it now? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a, actually, a interesting question. So the painting is actually, uh, work that we put into the budget for next year. I think thirty to forty thousand dollars, uh, for painting, that if we are able to get that accomplished now, it means that we don't have to spend that thirty or forty thousand. Um, they are doing inventory. They did, they helped Rose do a tech inventory of all the remaining devices we had. They are, uh, doing inventory. Some folks are doing inventory, um, with the furniture over at the warehouse so that we can, uh, determine, uh, what is, uh, still usable, what we would, uh, recommend, what they, I would recommend to the school committee, uh, to either sell or to, um, you know, put up for, uh, claiming by members of the community. And they're also helping to clean out a, 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 we rented a pod. We have books that are, have been used in classrooms but are no longer being used. We are, uh, sorting those, categor- cataloging them, and then we're going to make them available to teachers for classroom libraries, and then make them available to students. So that's some of the work that they're doing now, that they wouldn't be able to do in the summer, um, when they were traditionally cleaning buildings. If we do not return to school, what it really means is that we are ahead of our normal, uh, cleaning routine. And I would expect that, um, the, the incidence of overtime during the summer, uh, should, uh, fall significantly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I had, I saw, uh, Victor, Brian, and Marge.
And, uh, Jonathan, that, that would mean that, um, all of our buildings, uh, aren't they going to have to be sterilized at some time in the future, uh, for all of this situation?
Absolutely, and so i- if, uh, school committee members remember, um, when this first started, we went to an every-other-day, um, strategy where we were using a hydrogen peroxide solution. And so we have, uh, stayed on And so we have uh stayed on top of that. Our buildings, because no one's in them, have been sanitized. Um, and we have custodians in there, and they continue to do that. Um, so when, over the summer, they would do more of that. They would do the normal stripping and waxing of the floors, the emptying of the lockers, things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Bradshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Bryce, um, I, I'm really pleased to hear that we're starting to tackle some of the things that maybe we haven't had an opportunity. I, I know Ms. Ellsworth has been talking about our pods and our, and, and the basement of Colt Andrews and the, the amount of excess, excess furniture that we have, and getting rid of that, I, I'm really pleased to hear that we're making progress. Do we think, so the question now is, do we think that we're going to see the end of this by the time uh if, if we are allowed to start school back, let's say, next, next year, are they gonna be able to be through all of the excess furniture, all of the excess test books, all of the, the reading materials, and have a plan in place uh to free up that space that those, those items are currently taking?
Uh, I'm just gonna put a stake in the ground and say absolutely. Um, it would be my expectation that um, once we get the furniture inventory, we provide that information, and uh my team and I review it. We would then provide that to the budget and facility subcommittee. You guys would take action, then it would go to the full um school committee. So I would expect that we would be able to get through that, as well as the textbooks, uh, not textbooks, the, the other reading material. They're really leveled, leveled readers. Uh, I would expect that we'd be able to get through that before the start of next school year.
Uh, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Marge, did you have something?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up for myself. I'm accustomed to getting, I mean, things have changed, but I'm still accustomed to getting reports on what we're doing in special ed, what we're doing with budget, what we're doing with some of the things that we've talked about tonight. And the reports that we've gotten while giving me information aren't in-depth, and because we can't converse so easily as we could before, I'd like to get a little more in-depth to us about those kinds of things, because I just can't call and ask a question because there's nobody there to ask the question of. And usually, those are covered in the reports. So I would like for you to think about the possibility of restarting more um detail-oriented as to what Brian was talking about with different things that are going on with the budget, more detail-oriented on what we're doing.
Okay.
That makes sense? I mean, do you?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's something that we'll consider, and then we'll, we'll talk about it. I'm sure, I'm sure we'll talk later this week.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just, because we're not constantly moving in and out and seeing each other, some of that, a lot of that's getting lost.
Okay. We'll address it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who had any comments or questions? Or Dr. Bryce, anything else you wanted to say on this?
Uh, nothing else on this. Um, uh, again, uh, we are just very uh, very supportive of the work that all of our staff are doing um in these very difficult times. Um, we, we recognize that um i- in these times, we have to be even more um and better stewards of, of the taxpayer dollars. Um, and so we are just making sure um that we're doing those things.
Well said. Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just wanna remind everyone that at eight-twenty tonight is uh Be the Light. So everyone, to celebrate our, our seniors who are, you know, having a tough time missing out on their senior year, um, in support of them, everyone's gonna turn on a light in their house, um, and we'll just have, I guess, twenty minutes of kind of uh enchanting, quiet in our homes to, uh, to really think about our seniors and, and, and wish them well, so.
And, and absolutely. And, and Madam Chair, well, one of the things that, uh, so Dr. DiBiase um and her team uh connected with our team over at uh virtually today, and we talked about it. We know that there are um some of our young people that are interested in driving about. Um, unfortunately, I've taken one really um pretty vitriolic um response from an anonymous person in the community. Um, the police department um has informed us that um there can't be a parade, that it would be something that they would consider to be in violation of the governor's directive. Um, but more importantly, we want all of our students and community members to stay home and to stay safe. Um, and so that's why uh the, the, the high school is going to show this on, they're gonna show it on their Instagram feed, and we hope that people will be able to see that, to enjoy it, and, and just for a moment, to be very uh mindful, not only of our high school seniors who are going through so much and are doing such a good job of, of keeping up a good faith. Um, we certainly know how absolutely um just, just sad it is that they haven't had the, the type of end of their senior year uh that we would want um for them, but also to, to honor um some of our, our first responders and those other professionals. Hi, excuse me, those professionals, right, grandkids, um, those other professionals who um are just doing so much on a daily basis to take care of us all. Um, so I, I just wanted to take a moment uh to thank uh Dr. DiBiase and her team, to thank uh our local police that gave us the information. Um, just to remind our, our young people, we want you to stay home, stay safe, but look at uh the Mount Hope Instagram feed, um, cuz it's really gonna be an exciting opportunity. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I didn't think so.
Take care, everybody.
Stay safe, everybody.
Everyone for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless all of you.
Good night. Vic, you need a haircut. Me too.
Yeah, I do. I was wondering if you could have noticed that. Yes, I do.
Take care, Vic.
I gave Jay one the other day. It looks pretty bad.
I don't know. Maybe I'll shave it like uh Jonathan, you know?
I tried to convince him to do that.
Yeah, I might do that. All right, see you guys.
That he has dignity.
Take care.
All right, bye-bye.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, everyone. I'm gonna close the meeting.
Good night.
Night, night, Kate.
Good night.